You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 27, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting wwwcesslaporte county.org.
It is July 7, 2023. Want to call this meeting to order? Will please stand for the badge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, limited to justice. On the whole call.
Rodney McCormick.
Here, present.
Michael Vincent.
Present.
Stacy Benny. Talani Rayner. And Jacob Mooneyhand.
Present.
And Robert Longley.
Present. Have corn?
Yes, we do.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept amendments, but before we do that, we had to amend the amendments to correct the resolution from Lakeland.
Numbers.
Yes, it was not, it was not 2023-03. It should have been 04.
That should be 5 and 6.
Fuck her. And now we have, for the minutes, for the minute part, I need, we need to get that, they already made the amendments and I'm asking for approval of those minutes that's been already been amended, amended, I'm sorry.
I also have one correction also for the minutes where the Commissioner Fly asked women's property preservation if they had put in a bid. It's not women's, it's Williams.
I will entertain a motion with the necessary corrections, amendments. Sorry, my little apartment side.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Kenneth, Talani Rayner. Jacob Mooneyhand. And Robert Longley.
All right, then we're going to skip down the agenda for a minute and we're going to have to go to Lakeland Estates to correct the resolutions. I'll give that to you, Ms. Sutton.
Okay. For the first resolution, we had numbered it 2023-04 and it should be 05. And this is for the resolution authorizing Michigan City Housing Authority to contract the vacancy reduction with Lakeland Estates with AMG. The next one that was an error, we had as 2023-05 and it should have been 2023-06. That is the resolution authorizing Michigan City Housing Contract, Housing Authority to contract for vacancy reduction at Lakeland Estates with another level. And so that is.
And that number is?
06.
06. I want to entertain a motion to accept the new resolution with the right resolution dates on the time, I mean, numbers.
So moved.
Sorry.
Okay, Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
Aye.
Talani Rayner. Jacob Mooneyhand.
Aye.
And Robert Longley.
Aye.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda, there is no communications. And next is a report from staff reports.
Your pleasure. You got one staff number you want to start with?
Um, Brittany.
Hi, everybody. Um, for the most concerning, we have closed 127 vouchers, 36 are in this week's school and 91 of them were completed. It took about an average of 1.17 days with no major numbers. The only one that was filled was the $15 one on the front page.
Any discussion, any board member questions? Hearing on, next Ms. Sutton.
Okay. The next was the contract report. Rochelle is on vacation and so we will not have a finance report either this board meeting. When she comes back, we hope to have it be part of like next board meeting. Next after that is Section 8, which is Ms. May Cooper.
Okay, so right now we have 268 vouchers that are active. We have 148 still searching. We have two, two porters for this month. And we don't have any, probably a quarter here so far.
And I would like to say that Section 8 did have a conference with their participants today and they had over 15 participants that came in for the conference today.
There were people that hadn't turned their vouchers and they were fast due, so instead we're just sending them out letters. We did a briefing when they came in so we could talk to them. They could see us, they could meet us, we did it with them, that's what was correct. And what they were missing, like two or three things, we gave them 10 days to turn it back in, so they can get off behind us.
When you say we have 148 people searching, that means they're, they have the voucher but they cannot, they haven't secured a unit or house?
Yeah, it's hard to find places, so they're, they're looking because they're called access, we have to get them posted, we don't have to get them posted. And if we do, we got posts about the walls so they can look at them. We have some landlords are bringing up here, we can post it, some of them won't. And it's just they have the vouchers and they, if we know they're searching, we give them an extra 30 days, 20 days extension so they can still look for somewhere.
So what happened if they, they don't, they can't find, still can't find?
If they're originally from Michigan City, they can port out to somewhere else, but if they're not, I'm about to extend them, it just can't stay indefinite. So they call themselves, though I can't find it because they, I can still extend 30 days, 20 days, I just think that I'm going to extend it indefinitely.
And then I guess this question will be for Ms. Hutton and you, Ms. Cooper, I'm, they, on October 1st, on October 1st, then Inspire inspection is going to start. Do you see that being a problem with some of our tenants having a house? You understand what I'm saying? Would it be a problem with them? Some of these people are not keeping up with their properties.
Right.
And, and.
The first Inspire is only supposed to be a test the first year and so they're only going to just let us know what's wrong and then we can give those landlords a chance to fix it. If they don't fix it, then we can stop their payment and we can get the voucher to the tenant to go looking elsewhere.
All right, then my last question so the public can know that they have problems. We have like tenants that's out taking a voucher to like Canterbury and other places. If a Section 8 person is having problems like their refrigerator go down, their stove, can they call and file a complaint with us?
Yes.
As long as they're on Section 8, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for having all the questions. Any other member commission? Thanks.
Okay, the director's report. I did apply for the emergency. We have not heard that, which is kind of good, which means they're still reviewing, but we hope to have that soon. Also, we hope to have the vacancies start. In your package, I have put this year's audit and I have also put, we have to review the security. It's in your package, they have given us a different proposal than what we originally approved of and so we need to look at this.
So what was the significant change?
The significant change was now they are charging us $40 per an officer and they're charging us the $5 for the car. Because we wanted them to have the car, you know, the white car, whatever.
With that being said, I.
That's the only two changes.
If the rest of the board don't mind, I'd like to table this and put in a call, a special meeting as soon as possible to address the security situation. Because as you know, work is about to start in Lakeland Estates. So we got to make sure that we have security present. Have you had a chance to look at the changes, Mr. Rags?
I have not. Our office would not necessarily look at them other than to say if they're legal or illegal as a, or I shouldn't say legal, if they're lawful or unlawful. But as far as reviewing it for operational efficiency, that's not something we should.
Well, with that being said, Mr. Vincent, if you have nothing else, if you want to add something to it.
Well, I can tell you, the, the change was the original proposal was just 35 per an hour and it didn't include the car. When we met with them and did the Zoom, they told us that they would include the car because we asked for a marked car to be on the site as well as.
But then it also changes the, I think the other, there was other people that put in bids as well, I'm not, I don't recall and that's what I want to look at as well to see now, because now we're looking at a price difference. And I feel uncomfortable right now making any decision. I'd like to have a special meeting on this. So it's open for discussion. Any other board member commission, Mr. Vincent?
I guess the obvious question is, we put out a request for bid, we get the bids back, we award it, and now the bids change? What, I mean, we could do that with anybody. I mean, we could do that with the housing that's being repaired, right? With regards to a change order? I mean, we could, we're going to allow a change order, I guess, but if the original ask on the bid is the same, there should be no, there's nothing to change.
It was, we didn't ask for them to have the car.
We most certainly did.
No, we didn't ask for them to have the car. During our Zoom, we had that discussion and they told us they could provide us one, but it wasn't in the original, no, that's it.
I thought it was as well, but like I said, that's why I think we need to do a special meeting and bring our notes and discuss it. I, I, I thought it was too. Ms. Rayner?
I thought it was in the original session as well.
No, it wasn't in the original.
So we can go back and forth or we can just, I will entertain a motion for a special meeting.
Okay.
And we will arrange a date for that sometime next week as early as possible. Do you know when the work will start in Lakeland?
No, that's actually, that, that work has been delayed by our office, that's not on the, on NCHA. What we were doing is once we got proposals back, we reviewed, since we were tasked with drafting the contract, we reviewed what other housing authorities, the standard draft as a contract for MRFP that came in for construction. We noticed that almost standard, there was always an architectural drawing within, and the contract language was built around the architectural drawing. That's difficult to do without architectural drawings. So we looked at alternatives, we looked at some other housing authorities throughout the state of Indiana and we came up with something in office that we would stop letting perfect be the enemy of good, to go ahead and get a contract together to put it forward. As I spoke to Ms. Sutton about yesterday, we're getting copies of the proposals that were submitted and we're building around the proposals as opposed to building around the architectural drawings. Those contracts will be ready in about 48 hours.
Any questions?
The contractors have been, you know, chomping at the bit to get started. Ms. Hutton has been chomping at the bit to get those contracts in. You will often find it's for lawyers that slow things down because we're looking to make sure that all the eyes are dotted, all the teeth are crossed.
So within $48, you should have something done?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Sutton. You have a staff reports.
Oh, the next staff report, that's. Just, yes. Public House staff report is next for the month of June. We issued 25 lease violations for non-payment of rent. Month of June, we evicted three. We had 96% of occupancy rate and we now have 41 vacancies. On recollection, we collected $46,308. That's because we're helping the residents get rental assistance and the rental assistance is paying. We had one security incident. That incident regarded a shooting, which is a ongoing process with the police department. So at this time.
What site?
It was at a scattered site.
Okay. If, in a perfect world, what should we be collecting? What should we be bringing in every month? Is that?
In a perfect world?
Yeah, if, if we were to collect from everybody like we're supposed to, do you, can you tell me how much should we be bringing in? Or can you have an answer for me in the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because it really depends on the, how many people move in, how many, because it changes each month, so.
We should be collecting way more than this, right?
No, it's public housing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. Hutton? Ms. Vincent? 41 vacancies. Can your vacancies be used for the Section 8, 148 people searching?
Oh, and there's.
You have 41 vacancies in Jim. We have 148 people looking for Section 8, correct?
Mm-hmm, not for public housing.
Okay.
Mr. Vincent?
I have a general question for the director. With the heat outside, I mean, it's hot everywhere and there's not much we can do about it except for provide comfort for our residents. Speaking with a local safety officer, they went to a call at one of our Boulevard Garden residents and it was, it was in the upper 80s inside the apartment. Do we have, do we have air conditioning in these units?
Yes.
Why would, why would an apartment be so hot?
It depends on the resident. Some, some seniors don't like the air conditioner and so they open their windows, but the air conditioners are in there.
This, this resident was taken to the hospital. I don't know, do we do welfare checks or, or visits to make sure that, that folks' air conditioner is working, if they're comfortable? I know, I know we'll take calls if somebody has a breakdown, but some folks don't like how it ends, they just deal with it and is there, is there some obligation that we have to take, especially in extreme circumstances, that we ensure that the units are functioning properly? Is that something or am I just, am I thinking more in a, in a general sense of something that out of the ordinary would happen?
I mean, at this senior facility, we can do a wellbeing check for every.
For individuals or the other unit and just say, just checking on your air conditioner, making sure everything's okay, do you need a fan or whatever? You know, I, I don't know, but I'm just, I just want to ask a question because.
Like I said, we can.
I couldn't stand it if it was.
We can do that, but the majority of time we do have air conditioners, we have new air conditioners and we've been replacing as resident let us know there's a problem with there.
Do we have any control over the air conditioners? Is it resident control?
It's resident control.
Do we have control over the furnaces and the air conditioner? Would stop a resident from turning them both on?
I'm not sure the police can stop them from turning both of them on.
That would be a great question for maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, well.
Well, first, if I, yes, please, if I can answer your question just from a legal standpoint, as, as a sort of an operational standpoint, the housing authority only has a duty to act to repair issues that it knows about. So if in a particular situation, there is a resident in a property and the air conditioning is broken, that resident has the responsibility to inform the housing authority of that and at that point, then the housing authority has an obligation to address the issue. But the housing authority doesn't have the obligation to address the issue prior to receiving that notice. Now, of course, the notice is verbal written, most people will give written notice, whether through a work order or something like that, but the housing authority, if there's a tenant there and it's 90 degrees in the apartment and the tenant goes to the hospital, the housing authority wouldn't have the liability if that tenant never said, hey, I had an issue in my unit, or the housing authority didn't have reason to know there was an issue in that unit. There was maintenance and he worked and said, hey, I don't think this, this particular unit works or something like that. Some people, believe it or not, enjoy the heat. I'm not one of those people, but some people exist, right? So from a legal standpoint, the housing authority doesn't have that obligation. Now, from an operational standpoint, that is not, okay, too, I just wanted you to know from a legal standpoint, someone going to the hospital, the housing authority doesn't have.
Okay, that's the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Ms. Benny?
I was going to piggyback off of that, that kind of triggered the thought of mine of any appliances or anything in the unit. Is there a basic routine, like a yearly routine where the housing authority would go in and make sure that everything is operational in these units?
For better than maybe.
Well, the property manager is getting ready to do her annual inspection. So when she goes in and do her annual inspection, she will know if it's working or not.
Part of our mission statement, Mr. Rags and to the public, is that we need to, I only apply, allow affordable housing but safe housing. Dealing with elderly, maybe we might want to talk about a resolution at the special meeting, just to do a welfare check if the temperature gets to a certain temperature. Mr. Vincent, if you don't mind, I think that's going to be something that we might want to discuss and get passed, but yeah, safe. We want, we want the tenants to be safe. We don't want them to pass out or fall out and I do, I understand and I agree with you. If they don't report it, how do we know? 911 is not a report. That's unfortunate event and it costs a lot of grief to us with everybody. So if we bring that up, I make sure that's on the agenda for the special meeting as well.
Yes.
I had a question about the numbers. We, looks like we received more rent than $46,000, but our tenant debt went up by $24,000. How's that happen?
We had three evictions.
$8,000 each?
They had high rents because we're still getting rid of people that did not pay their rent. We still get people that have not paid rent in a long period of time on the books and so we're still trying to work with them. First, we were working with them, they come in and they get their emergency assistance or whatever, we try to assist them, but if you, I can have the property manager.
Yes, I was going to just say that.
As far as the debt is, we are actively, well, after the tenant's court debt, I send notices out every month along with the statements, you know, showing what they owe and they haven't paid. We have several tenants that still have not paid rent in a couple of years. Me and Ms. Blanch have been working with the tenants and getting them assistance, calling 211, helping with the application, ensuring that the lease gets sent to the emergency assistance. So we are working with them. And as far as the inspections go, I am starting our annual inspections. I would like to implement preventative maintenance inspections, you know, to do semi-annual inspections, you know, in the summertime or maybe in the winter, you know, the peak times where we can go in, make sure the appliances are working, you know, furnaces, right, you know, different things that need to be done. So, you know, me and Ms. Sharon, I've been speaking to her about that. So I am starting a housekeeping annual inspections and this is because I know that Inspire has started and I want to, you know, get a drop on my inspections for when it comes out.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are you able to work firsthand with the maintenance department? You calling them, talking to them, working together?
But I can, you know.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Mr. Longley, anything else?
Well, it jumps out at me because it was steady for January through May and then jumps up to $24,000. So that's kind of why, I'm just kind of curious, why now it went up so much? If it didn't go gradually, I mean, you had evictions these different months, it didn't change. Now it changes for three evictions.
They were large, $7,000, a couple were $7,000, I mean, these are large amounts, so they were very large.
What did everyone's work?
We had one that's more, but we, those people are actually, you know, getting assistance.
Assistants are working.
So ones that you see there, they didn't, you know, they didn't come in for assistance, they just ignored, you know, all the notices until it was time to go to court. Those were very large amounts.
Mr. Vincent?
I have a question and a, and a thought. I don't see the number here, but on, on a report some months back, it was like we had a waiting list that was ridiculously long, like 2,000 or something like that, people waiting for housing to open up. At what point, you're talking about somebody being in debt for years, and it may be a legal question too, at what point do we just pull the trigger and say, you have to go, we have plenty of people waiting for homes and you're abusing the system? So I think that time period should be sooner than later, especially before they build up $8,000.
I agree. It was a proportion, you know, it's, I am a little bit more hardcore, you know, because I come from the private sector, so I'm a little bit more aggressive when it comes to rents. There are probably about 30 people I would say to the, I would love to send to the attorney today, today. However, you know, we, we're trying to work with them, but I would like to pull the plug on several of the tenants that's, that haven't paid in years.
You talking about the waiting list?
No, it's the waiting list. So to answer your question, I have actually pulled from the waiting list. I've pulled twice so far. So in June, I pulled 20 applications, we received three back. One was denied because the tenant, I mean, the applicant requested that we remove her from the list. I sent out 20 again for July. So we are waiting, you know, to get those applications back in, to, you know, update the list on PHA Web so it reflects, you know, correctly the inactive for our people and also the active.
Okay. So is there any way we, you can go down the waiting list, contact those individuals that's been on the waiting list for over a year, ask them if they're still in need? Like purging the ones that don't? Have we done that?
I just started pulling from the waiting list in June. June was the first time that we decided to pull because the, and just one bedrooms right now because we have a few one bedrooms available. I haven't pulled two or three bedrooms because they're not ready yet. I want to get their hopes up, you know, thinking that they're going to go into a newly bare zone and they're still waiting to get them completed.
You say you sent out a notice for how many to?
One bedrooms, I sent out 20.
And what, what was the response?
Three.
Three?
Three.
I think we need to go down that list and purge and get it cleaned up if that, if need be, that'd be my recommendation. But any other questions from Ms. Benny?
How many one bedrooms do you currently have?
Four. Four, 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 four. We have another one coming up soon, but four for sure.
And then how many are currently, actually you've done the, we've reached out last month and this month, how, what's the number now on the waiting list?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number. I can have it for you at the next meeting or I can send it to you, you know, after this meeting, at the time.
Any other questions from any commissioner? Ms. Hudson? I guess we have the attorney's report. Unless you have any more staff reports, any more staffs?
I just wanted to make a suggestion. My name is Lucille, I'll probably introduce myself. So I've been here for about five months now. I'm in the ACV department with Ms. Angela. I've been doing housing for about nine years now. One of the discussions that we've been having is in regards to training. We, since there's one person per department pretty much, the staff members have been discussing certified training in other departments that we are not familiar with. So if someone is not available, we can, you know, fill those shoes. So Ms. Sharon has been looking over the schedule for some of the trainings, so we're just waiting to see what's gonna take place from there.
And for the record, I just want to make it perfectly clear, I have spoken with Ms. Hudson, it's been about a year now, and I want all the training that you guys, that we can provide to you, to go ahead and move forward with doing that. This board, if it needs our approval, we're going to approve it. We, we're not going to be the holdup. I believe that if we are trained in what we're doing, that we can transition smoothly. And if training is needed, we need to get it done. So that'd be Ms. Hudson's decision, it won't be no backlash from us. I can assure you that. What about attorney report?
Yes, the attorney.
Most of the, I don't know if you can, I don't want to discuss everything I would like to say, first, you'll get the Lakeland Estates contract. Secondly, with the, the damages judgments that we did receive on some convictions this past week, they, the numbers were large, the numbers were substantial. I do understand some of the board's confusion of why the numbers have gotten that high, but I can tell you since the COVID pandemic, HUD was in a position where they were saying, please keep people housed, work with them in whatever way you can, to the point where housing authorities required to go through the ERA process, the emergency rental assistance process. And while the tenant is in that process, the housing authority is discouraged from the eviction process. And because the COVID pandemic is in a lot of people's rearview mirrors, a lot of that ERA money is not as readily available, a lot of the ERA staffing is not there, and the ERA process takes a lot longer now. But that has been a holdup with several authorities. So that explains why it's in the numbers. You can get somebody with, well, you have an outstanding rent of $7,000 because they haven't been paying since, you know, March of 2020, and it's just taken this long. A for the eviction moratoriums to be lifted, for guidance to come out from HUD on how to go forward, all of the things that the CARES Act implemented until further notice and there's been no other further notice, a lot of those things are still in place, like the extended notification of disqualification due to a failed offense, things of that nature. I do understand though, this board, why you would say, how can somebody get to $7,000 in back rent, but those were.
On the new business, Ms. Hudson?
Yeah.
The resolution?
Resolution 2307, semi-annual tours of Michigan City Housing Authority real and personal property for the Board of Commissioners. I think the attorney.
Yes, we, we also have a draft resolution by a commissioner, stating that to, you know, with the thought of being more effective, as mentioned, not saying the board is not effective, but just to give the board greater effectiveness, it might be in the best interest of the authority that the board have semi-annual tours, tours twice a year, where the board can go and look at the properties that the housing authority owns, see all the scattered site units, see what equipment the housing authority has, just to kind of get a good gauge of what goes on here at the authority. Now, to be clear, this is not an inspection or anything like that. This is not going into tenants' homes and looking around, making sure that the closets don't leak or anything like that. It's more of just a general tour of the properties to say, this is the, this multifamily facility, where we house X amount of people, these are grounds, this is where the tenants congregate, these are some of the things that we're looking to do over the next year with this particular property or for these particular tenants and moving on to the next site. Obviously, with the commissioner being able to ask questions or take a look at things during the tours.
I would entertain a motion to accept this resolution and also to take effect immediately. The goal here is just to see what our property look like, what we have going on, and then we can bring it back as a board and we can make policies to change certain things if need be. But we need to know what condition we are, our, our, our equipment, vehicles, maintenance department, any, any thing that we have, what, what condition it's in. And this, I think the only thing that we would have to do is coordinate a date with the ED and get this done. We are not, in this resolution also, I believe, we're not asking to speak and this don't give us no authority to speak any of your workers, this is just to do a tour of our properties. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept resolution 202307. Motion to accept. Second. On the roll call?
Rodney McClamick?
Aye.
Michael Vincent?
Aye.
Stacy Benny?
Aye.
Tanani Rayner? Jacob Mooneyhand?
Aye.
And Robert Longo?
Aye.
I think we are at unfinished business. We already went over Lakeland Estates. We already went over staff training, so we are talking about, we're back again at the utility allowance. I asked for this to be placed back on the agenda, because we, I would like to have an update. I know that we all agree that after the incidents with the, the checks being written and forged and whatever, that we were going to make sure that a bank account was set up, direct deposit. And I just don't know where we at with that, and I just wanted to get an update from Ms. Hudson.
Again, I've been reaching out, looking at this, I sent out a letter, yeah, it's created. However, the thing is, a lot of them don't have bank accounts, some of them don't know how to obtain things. So I was wondering if there was something that we can do. Other agencies give out a card, you know, through their banking system, give the card for us, and then we can, you know, load the money on there and say, we have the card. So is that something that we can look into possibly?
Yes.
Because it's just trouble, you know, and I get it, you know, people don't understand finance and banking, you know, repay cards and things of that nature. So probably we'd be better if we just leave ourselves.
Is that what you'd like to have happen?
Yeah, we can get to it.
When we're looking into it, I want something to happen, this needs to happen. We can't keep having to open ourselves up to this risk, security risk, I don't want to keep doing that. Mr. Vincent?
Just a suggestion, I, Ms. Benny and I had a conversation, meeting with some folks over at Horizon Bank, and they are very interested in helping. They do all sorts of classes, whether it be budgeting for folks, they help people who have never had a bank account get set up with a bank account, teach them how to use it, what it means to have a bank account. They go through the whole step and, and they're professionals, they've been in business in town for many years and they're very friendly with giving back to the community. So I think instead of trying to do it yourself here in-house to bounce something off of them, maybe you can get a.
It would actually come through them, so. I can only speak about Gary Housing, because that's who I know that has the card that they give to the, the section eight department and also public housing. They get a, you know, they went through their bank and their bank, the housing authority's bank issues out the card. So what I mean by us doing it in-house, we wouldn't require the tenants to go out to get that card. You know, our bank would supply them, the debit card to put their utility, only utility allowance on their.
Right.
So it will be through that.
Well, I'm gonna leave this on the unfinished business and hopefully, um, next meeting we have the cards going or something happening, because we just, we can't keep going month, month, then year with this situation or a chance of us getting compromised, being compromised again. So we'll leave that on unfinished business and now I guess we have to point a public comment. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Please introduce yourself and tell us your address, please.
Nelson, 711 Downing Street. What are the requirements for keeping your property maintained when it comes to the housing authority tenants?
He's celebrating.
He's running for the, uh, he's running, but he's asking a question about property, our property. Can you rephrase that again or speak a little bit louder, please?
When it comes to maintaining the property, when it comes to occupying a property through the housing authority, what are the requirements to keep your outside parents of the property?
Is it a single family house or is it?
Sure, it's three houses on A Street Hill, I think they're under the housing authority, if I'm not mistaken. I spoke recently, I've just been getting calls with just having trash outside the house, trash all over the yard. So I'm just trying to see if that's something that you guys require tenants to upkeep? Is that something that you're helping with? Like, what was that break?
The tenant, if you are getting calls, then you need to call us and give us the address and then the property manager or myself will go out and address that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nelson, our property manager and our executive director will give you a card. And if you have a problem, you go from there. I don't know if we own all three of those low-income houses on the hill that he's speaking, I think we own one, but I think that's our non-for-profit. So that would not be addressed with this board, but our next board, and we will find out with our attorney, and this is the president, Mr. Vincent and Ms. Benny is the vice president, so they will look into it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes. Any other public, forgive me.
So, so sorry, but I think, I know the new leaders speaking up and I've already issued a lease violation today.
Great.
So that's what we do as far as the yard, so in the single family home, if we are to see any trash, any debris, you know, overgrown grass, we go out and take pictures and then we issue out a lease violation and they have 24 hours to correct it.
Okay, and if it's not correct?
Then, then they, we, they, you know, they, you know, we charge them, so if there's somebody you need to work with, you know, we'll open a live meeting.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate it.
Now, understanding that eviction, when eviction's starting, our attorney's here, he can probably vouch for it, but the process is not fast. Yes, I'm though, I'm just saying.
I just want to look nice, you know.
Yes.
You know, I want to look at your trash.
Correct.
Right. We understand.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes.
Um, any more public comments? With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you.